Good evening and welcome to the June Plan Commission for the City of Lebanon. We will call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Kelly, will you take the rule?
Hey, Corey Koots.
Here.
Dan Bayshore.
Here.
Kevin Krulick.
Here.
Diane Scott. Absent. Brian Tandy.
Here.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Heather Schaller.
Here.
Lori Gross.
Here.
Rebecca Stanton. Absent.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes from the prior meeting.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. I see we have some old business on the docket. Docket 23-30 is the Bar Louie Restaurant Development. Matt, would you like to tell us about that?
Sure. Good evening, Commission. You guys probably recognize this from last month. This came to you as a combined development plan application with the Fairfield Inn Hotel in the Gateway Marketplace, which is at the intersection of State Road 32 and I-65. If we pull up the site plan here, we can see at the last meeting, we explained that there was a variance application that needed to go through for the Bar Louie Restaurant before you could approve the development plan. They did get the variance approval for building orientation, and I can show you the elevations here in a moment, but they did receive that variance approval earlier this month. So the restaurant is back to you for development plan approval tonight. And we won't go through all the details. Like I said, we touched on them last month, but we'll hit the high point. So again, this is about a 5,700 square foot sit-down restaurant called Bar Louie. The associated parking that goes along with the restaurant is provided, and I'll scroll down a little bit and see if you can remember the Fairfield Inn that is directly to the south. They're on separate lots, but it is kind of a combined development. So you did provide development plan approval for the Fairfield. Now tonight, we're looking for the restaurant. We'll pull up the elevation here. So we're looking at the north side of the building facade. So here, where my cursor is, is the north side that faces State Road 32. This is where the variance came into play. Our overlay district standards require the main entrance to a structure to face the road of primary determination. So the restaurant, by definition, should have faced State Road 32. But because it was going to be accessed off of Gateway Avenue, the developer and staff agreed that the entrance along Gateway Avenue was more appropriate so that it could match the Fairfield Inn entrance as well. So they did receive approval and created a front-like facade along the northern elevation of this. So it gives the look of a main entrance, but the main entrance is actually along the east side of the building. So as we go through, and we've obviously went through the technical advisory review for this particular development. Lebanon Utilities submitted their comments. City of Lebanon Stormwater. The engineer submitted his list of comments for the project. Fire Department. And then when we get into planning staff review, again, the proposal, the details were provided to you last month, but we provide them again in the staff report, and we'll just make note that the development standards are detailed within the staff report, and the development plans as submitted do demonstrate compatibility and compliance with the unified development ordinance, as well as the claim unit development ordinance that was identified for Gateway Marketplace. Again, that's minimum lot sizes, your front side and rear setbacks, your maximum building heights. This particular development was required to have 175 parking spaces. They are providing 176, with eight of those being ADA compliant, and they're also providing bicycle parking places, so the pedestrian connectivity is there. They did submit a photometric plan that shows compatibility with the lighting standards of our UDO. The signage package as well was compliant with the UDO and the PUD. And then the architectural review, I pulled up the elevation a moment ago, but as you can see, the elevation, the architectural feature and design is high-quality materials. The buildings are constructed primarily manufactured stone or EFAS on all four sides of the building. In addition to the variance for the main entrance of the restaurant to face Gateway Avenue, the applicant updated again the facade of the South Street entrance to make it look like a Main Street front-like facade. So in review of the submitted development plans as presented, Lebanon Planning Staff finds compliance with unified development requirements for the subject site. Staff recommends approval of the subject development plan contingent on the following condition, that the applicant adequately addresses any remaining City of Lebanon Technical Advisory Committee comments prior to application for any building permits or site improvements. And happy to answer any questions for you, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt? Anybody have to step forward?
Hi, Dylan Reynolds with Spaceco, the civil engineer for the project. Don't have much to add since we kind of talked about this last month from what Matt already introduced. But just one thing to point out is all the technical advisory comments have been addressed. So with the hopeful approval tonight, we're ready to keep moving forward with this project.
Thank you. Any questions for him? Okay. This is a, thank you. Is this a public hearing? If anybody would like to step forward, please sign in, state your name. We will close the public hearing. There's nobody stepping forward. Any further questions? From Matt or the applicant? Okay, we entertain a motion on docket 23-30.
I make a motion that we approve the development plan contingent on the following conditions, that all tack comments have been addressed.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Said nay? Okay, 23-30 carries. Thank you. Matt, tell us about 23-35. The Lebanon Community School Corporation is requesting a developmental plan approval to construct a new elementary school to be located on about 18 acres on northwest corner of Fordice and John Bart.
Sure. Allow me just a moment. Let me get our plans pulled up here so that we can all be on the same page. So the parcel that we're looking at now, the applicant, Cash Wagner and Associates for Lebanon Community School Corporation, has submitted a development plan application for a new elementary school. The new elementary school is proposed to be located near the intersection of Fordice Road and John Bart Road. Try to get this aerial so that you can see a little better here. So as we can see here, we have John Bart Road along the east side. Fordice Road is along the southern portion. The applicant is proposing about 100,000 square foot elementary school with 38 classrooms with the associated parking for both buses, visitors, and guests. The next screen will pull, I'm sorry, let me jump back real quick. So the site, the subject site is the southwest corner or southeast corner of this large lot that you see. The applicant is proposing a stub street to come off of John Bart Road up at the intersection of 150. So for those of you familiar with John Bart and 150, that is currently a one-way stop for 150 would become a four-way intersection for a stub street that connects to a drive, a private drive, that would be a parent pickup and drop-off queuing lane. And I'll show that on the next screen, but I wanted to show it here because it doesn't show it on our next slides. But it does connect at 150 and will come down onto the side on this private drive. So we'll pull up this colored elevation that makes it a little prettier. So the intersection with 150 is north of here off the map, but you can see there is a double-lined queuing lane for a parent pickup and drop-off that comes along and matches up to the east side of the school. The main entrance of the school would face south, which would be Fordice Road, and then have visitor and staff parking along the front, and then bus and event parking along the western portion. As you can see, there's the hard and playgrounds for the elementary students. Over on the west side, this is a detention area. They use the softball, or I'm sorry, the soccer fields. It's just kind of placeholders. I don't think they have any intention of actually putting sporting fields there. That will be detention for stormwater runoff and detainment before it releases into the drainage system. So again, about 100,000 square foot new elementary school, and we'll kind of scroll down as I scrolled too quickly. They did provide some elevations of what the school was proposed to be look like, primarily an all-brick structure with some highlights, architectural highlights to give it some character, so different colored brick throughout the front, throughout the elevations. Go back to the site map. As you can see, there is landscaping that is being proposed on the site, so we do have a landscape buffer along the east and southern boundaries where the new property would abut the residential, existing residential development along Fordice and along John Bart Road. Earlier this month, the applicant did receive four variances for this particular development. One of them was parking lot curbing. They got relief from the parking lot curbing to allow stormwater runoff to sheet drain into the nearby detention. They received relief from the parking lot interior landscaping requirement. As you can see in the parking lots, they did provide some of the interior parking lot landscaping. They didn't provide all of it. It makes it challenging for buses to maneuver and large vehicles, as well as for snow removal. So they did receive relief from that. They also received a variance for parking lot perimeter landscaping, and as I touched on, they did provide perimeter landscaping along the east and southern borders, just none along the western side as this area is proposed for potential future parking. So there was no reason, or no real good reason for them to install landscaping along the western side if it was just going to be torn out in the future for additional parking to be added. And then the final variance that they received was for lot plantings. Our UDO requires a certain number of trees to be installed per every square foot of open space, and based on the open space of the tier, our UDO would require them to plant somewhere in the vicinity of 200 additional trees. So we thought that was a bit excessive, and the Board of Zoning Appeals agreed and provided them relief of that lot planting requirement. So again, this did undergo technical advisory committee review. City of Lebanon Utilities provided their comments. Stormwater, fire, the engineering department submitted theirs. And the planning review, as again, we touched on some of these already, but in the staff report, we did detail all of the development standards that we did review, including lot sizes. They do meet all the applicable setbacks, front side and rear. They are required two and a half parking spaces per classroom, which would be 95 total spaces. The applicant is providing 111, so they more than meet the parking requirements of the UDO. The submitted photometric plans do align with the lighting standards of our UDO. The landscaping buffer does provide a plan that is applicable to the requirements of the UDO if you do, excuse me, consider the variances that were received. No signage plan has been submitted yet, but will be before any signs or permits are released. And then we touched on the architectural review. The building meets all applicable architectural standards of the UDO. The building would be primarily brick in various shades with some cut stone accents. And I'm kind of going through this a little quick because I know the applicant may have some more information. So in review of the submitted development plan as presented, the Lebanon Planning Staff finds compliance with unified development ordinance requirements for the subject site. Staff recommends approval of the subject development plan contingent on the following two conditions, that the applicant adequately addresses any remaining technical advisory committee comments prior to the application for building permits or site improvements, and that the applicant submits a signage package that meets all applicable UDO standards prior to the installation of any signage. And with that, happy to answer any questions you might have on the new elementary school development plan.
I do have one. I may have just not heard it, but with 150 and John Bart Road, did you say there was going to be a four-way stop there?
There will be, yes.
And to jump on that, is there any plan right now to extend that into, towards the middle school?
As of right now, there's no plans. It's been talked about conceptually, but as of right now, initially, it's just the stub off of 150 to connect to the private drive for this parent pickup drop-off area.
Okay. Other questions for Matt?
I believe Kevin kind of addressed it, but the, that area is very important with drainage. I know a lot of the folks along John Bart there, some of that dumps into that field currently, and I think Kevin has comments in there about the tiles and that sort of thing, but we're feeling pretty confident that that's not going to have a negative effect outside, correct?
Yeah, not to, not to get too far into the weeds, but before we knew there was an elementary school project, there was a project to reconstruct Fordice, and that project originated to try to address drainage concerns that we saw along there. And so there's been an effort, a concerted effort between the city and the school corporation, as well as some private developers, the developers of Cedar Ridge, to put infrastructure in place, upsize infrastructure to address that. Essentially, the road will be lowered so that we can more correctly capture the front yard runoff from the lots through there. There will be a modernized storm sewer facility that will, that will collect all that. Some of that will be directed to the school property where we will share in the detention capabilities of their facilities, and then it will outlet to the south through the, through the Fordice Road project down to Cedar Ridge, which we had an agreement, an MOU put in place between us and that developer to upsize their storm sewer so that we can get that drainage to the creek. So to put it simply, yes, I feel like we've addressed the drainage concerns.
It's been considered. Got it.
Very much so.
Yeah, my apologies for not touching on that. The site drainage, as many of you know, the site currently doesn't drain very well as it is. The proposed development does have numerous detention ponds, drainage swales that will mitigate the problems that currently exist and will either, will certainly improve the area, but certainly will not make it worse. So they are required, any development within the city is required to detain their stormwater runoff and to release it at an appropriate rate, and Kevin and the engineering teams have all their measurements and everything stated as far as what is required, and we are comfortable with what they're proposing. That will not cause any, create any additional drainage issues onto neighboring parcels or even the rideaways.
The only question I would have is, if you bring up the map of the school, I'd assume there's a utility area back here somewhere. Is it this part that is kind of, I'm going to call it jutted in? Looks like it says, there's 210 right there. You see it right in the middle? Right there? Is that, is that what I would call a utility area where deliveries would be made or things of that nature?
Oh, yeah. Yes. So the cafeteria and the kitchen are to the entrance on the northeast, or northwest side of the building. So yes, that would be the delivery area.
Okay. My question was going to be, is it screened enough? But it appears so, so never mind.
Yeah.
I've also been asked to note that the staff report says 23-13. Just to note that it's actually, should be 23-35.
That is correct. It should be 23-35.
Okay. Any further questions for Matt?
Question, the city, they're doing upgrades on John Bart Road, correct? Like sidewalks?
Yes, yeah. The applicant will be required to provide pedestrian connectivity along the eastern side of the parcel, so it will run, connect to the city's new sidewalks that we will be installing on John Bart, or I'm sorry, on Fordice Road.
Fordice.
And then will run north-south along John Bart Road up to the intersection of 150.
Okay. Thank you. Anymore? The applicant care to step forward?
Yeah, and then just, what, I just flip through?
Yeah, you can scroll down that way. Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah. Yeah. My name is Dale Wagner with Jabalda Design, representing Lebanon Community School Corporation. So yes, this is, okay, so how do I get it up on the screen there, Matt?
There it is.
Oh, there we go. A little delayed, I guess. So yeah, we've been working many months with the school corporation and with the city. The staff have been excellent to work with, the city staff, and we're at a point to ask for approval of this. You know, it's going to be a jewel to your community, I think, in terms of the buildings, the architecture, and just what we're doing to the improvement of this site, which is right now just an agricultural field. So you know, a lot's been, a lot of thought has gone into the project with, you know, student pickup and drop-off and bus drop-off and even events, and we do have, you know, if the bed environment is correctly, we're going to increase the parking just a little bit as well to even give a little bit of cushion on those nights when the grandparents show up to watch their grandchildren perform on the stage, whatever. So yeah, it's, the school is very excited about it. We're very excited to see it get underway and come up out of the ground. So this is the view from Fordice Road if you're driving past Fordice Road. The main entrance is just a little bit left of center of the page, which would be the main entrance to the school. Of course, it'd be all secure entrance and everything to, as people check in. It's a blending of brick and metal, accents for metal, and some limestone accents as well. So view of the, a little bit close up of the main entrance with the administration to be on to the left of where you see the canopy entrance, kind of a two-story volume space as you enter the building to give a little bit of pizzazz and wow, but not too much over the top either. So then you'd see some limestone bands as well. So the accents that you see in gray above the windows will be metal, a metal panel system that will blend and just kind of tie the building all together. And then if you come to events in the school, this is the entrance that you'll be going into for anything at the gymnasium or the cafeteria after hours events, weekend events. And then the buses are parked close by here too, but they obviously won't be parked there for events, whatever. That would just be all vehicle parking. But again, the blending of the brick, a couple different colors of brick, a little bit of higher volume there at the entrance as well, so, but very elegant, very ties into, I think, the neighborhood and community. That is pretty much all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The, you know, it so happened to overlap with the school board meeting that's going on, I think about the same time here, so there's no one from the school corporation present, but be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, I commend your staff. They've been great to work with.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If you want to talk, please sign in. Try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, and say your name and your address,
Good evening, everybody. My name is Susan McFry-Sosby. My address is 1385 John Bart Road, so in other words, right across from the proposed school. First, I want to state that I'm a graduate of Lebanon Community Schools. My daughter is as well. My daughter attended Central Elementary School and had a wonderful experience there. So we do support the schools. My question, living on John Bart Road and having done so for my family since 1969, is why are we building the school right at the intersection of Fordice and John Bart Road rather than when the school owns so much land, building it more toward the middle school and the high school? Then you have the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school in closer proximity. Right now, we will put additional traffic onto very busy roads, Fordice Road and John Bart Road, that were not built already for the traffic that is on those roads each and every day. From personal experience, I can tell you, getting ready to commute to my job, there are many mornings, including this morning, that we have to sit already to get out of our driveways. So my concern is you're going to take John Bart Road and Fordice Road and add a lot of additional traffic to two very, very busy roads. So that's my question. Why not build it that closer to the middle school rather than add the additional traffic onto two very, very busy roads? So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anybody else like to have a comment? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Do we have any additional questions for staff? The applicant?
I can touch on just a couple of those comments. A site location, the school does own a large majority of the property. I'm sorry.
Close the public, I did close the public.
Oh, I think.
Never mind.
I'm sorry. The school does own quite a bit of acreage out here. The location of the school was based off of what their future land use requires, so the school has ideas for other things that they want to build in this area around the middle school or behind the middle school and north of this proposed elementary. So their site location is based off of other uses that they may have for it in the future. Traffic-wise, yes, it will create increased amount of traffic, but as any development within our community, they are required to provide traffic studies or conduct traffic studies and make the necessary road improvements for those, for the new development. And I may lean on Kevin a bit to talk about what we may have seen early on and what we might see going forward as far as maybe new improvements on Fordice and John Bart. Or we talked about Fordice already, but John Bart maybe?
Yeah, I could, probably need to talk about both of them. I mean, we are, because we're already in the, in the works of planning for Fordice, we're helping out the school with looking at some of the traffic analysis using our, using our consultants, of course, our third-party consultants. So on Fordice, there'll be left-turn lanes to go into the school. There'll also be facilities to get, you know, right-turn tapers to get, so that we can maintain a lane in each direction that is not waiting for people to turn in and out of the school. Primarily, the entrances off of Fordice would be bus traffic or visitor traffic, so the parent drop-off lines will come from the north, with plenty of queuing off of, outside of right-of-way for that to take place. There'll also most likely, and we're still working on the traffic analysis, there'll most likely be a left-turn lane at the intersection of Fordice and John Bart, so that cars waiting to turn left to go north onto John Bart will not be holding up traffic turning right to go south on John Bart. Won't be any improvements to John Bart south of there. A lot of that right-of-way is county right-of-way, but we are, we are looking at that, but primarily the width of the lanes is adequate to pass the traffic. As you go north on John Bart, there will be improvements along the school frontage. The road will be widened, the road will be resurfaced, trails will be added, and then at the intersection of 150 and John Bart, there will be some sort of intersection improvement. Again, still doing the analysis, so we're not sure if that is a roundabout or a traffic signal or left-turn lanes. We're working through all that right now, trying to figure out what the best solution will become.
Thank you, Kevin.
See, asking a question about that, could John Bart and Fordice become a four-way stop to control more traffic?
I mean, anything's possible.
I know we're dealing with county too, so that's...
Well, we would control the intersection, so that's a possibility that we could make that a four-way stop. I would have to, I, we will look at that and see if the amount of traffic will meet warrant. Hate to add stops where they aren't warranted. of traffic will meet warrant. Hate to add stops where they aren't warranted, but that's something we can look at. Because, be honest, it doesn't necessarily slow traffic down. It just means they have to hit the brakes and then accelerate again, which is not always the most favorable thing for the people living next to that. The other thing, too, I will say, if we can keep traffic moving through the intersection as opposed to stopping everybody, generally, it will perform better if we have the proper turn lanes at the intersection. The other thing that's also worth pointing out that I didn't mention at the beginning is that, you know, school drop-off and pickup is generally what we would call out-of-peak traffic.
Right.
You know, you don't go, you don't take the kids to school the same time you go to work, and you don't come home at the same time. So, generally speaking, especially in the afternoon, in the evenings, those PM peaks at a school don't coincide with the peaks that we see on the roads in general. Morning's a little closer, but there is somewhat of an offset there. We are, we are building trails all the way back in to connect the Fordice Road project to the East Street Trail, so we hope that will help to promote, promote more kids walking to school. But the reality is, is most kids don't walk to school anymore.
One other question. I mean, I know we weren't, there's no plans at this point to connect 150 all the way over to the middle school, but I don't know, it seems like in my head, if we did that, it would alleviate some issues.
It would complicate them.
You think? I mean, I live on the north side. If I had to take my kid to that school, I'd rather go through the middle school.
It could do either, but I think the biggest concern from the school standpoint, and I won't speak for them, but I've spoken to them, is on a Terry piece. So, the road construction of additional road is a budget of their capital referendum. They want to get more classrooms for kids.
It'd be a safety issue. That's why I look at it, so.
And then, you also, as part of that, if you factor in the parent pickup drop-off line for the middle school, if that were to be a public road coming across there, 150, now you've got a backup every morning and afternoon on a public road. So, there's going to have to be some sort of reconfiguration with the middle school pickup drop-off line in order to accommodate a public road running east-west through that property. So, that's just something else to consider. Again, conceptually, it's been talked about. There's no plans as of right now. There's no funding source. There's no engineering documents. There's nothing that shows that 150 will be extended all the way to the west, but it is a conversation that has been had and probably will continue to be had for the next several years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Matt or the applicant? I would entertain a motion for docket 23 dash 35.
I'll make a motion to approve the development plan contingent on adequately addressing any remaining City of Lebanon Technical Advisory Committee comments and submitting a signage plan.
Second?
Yeah, got a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Most carries. Congratulations. We'll now move on to docket 23 dash 36. Lenar Homes of Indiana LLC is requesting the rezoning application to PUD, planning a development for a 12-acre parcel located at 2802 North State Road 39 for a residential townhome development. Matt?
Sure. We're kind of moving to the northwest side of town now. If we pull up the site map here, we can kind of get you acclimated to where we're at. We're on North State Road 39. We have Witham Hospital, Witham Hospital just on the east side of the road, so this parcel highlighted in yellow. The applicant, Lenar Homes, is proposing a rezone to planned unit development for a townhome community called Corbett Towns. As we move in to the site itself, we can see here that we have, they are proposing an east-west road, so the primary entrance and access point will be off State Road 39 near Witham Hospital. They will have interior drive aisle that will connect to an existing stub street on the eastern side of the Meadow Wing subdivision. If you've driven through there, there's a, for years, there's been a street that just kind of abruptly ends in that Meadow Wings division. Now, it will continue all the way through to State Road 39, allowing a secondary egress and ingress point for this new development, as well as for the residents of, the existing residents of Meadow Wings will now have a secondary ingress and egress point that they currently don't have. The applicant is also proposing a stub street to the north, as highlighted here on the site plan, that would allow for future development on the northern piece of this parcel that has been split. So, the applicant is proposing a total of, give me for a moment, I'm sorry, I lost my number, 17 buildings with 96 townhomes. Each townhome will be a two-story development. I'll pull up elevation for you here. Each townhome will be two-story. Each will have a two-car garage. Each will have a driveway that will accommodate two additional vehicles without blocking the sidewalks. That's something that was important to us, to make sure that we're able to keep those sidewalks clear. As you'll see, there are landscaping that has been submitted with this. Each unit will have trees out front, a number of shrubs, both on the front and on the sides and rear, especially if they are budding a public street or right-of-way. So, all the units that would be along the corners would have eight additional shrubs and trees. And then, in the red, we have landscape buffers that are being provided where there is existing residential development. So, along the western side here, that abuts the Meadow Wing subdivision, and along the northern side, there will be a 20-foot buffer that will include, let's see, six trees and 15 shrubs for every 100 feet. And then, along the State Road 39 buffer, that will include the same amount of trees and shrubs, but will also include a three-to-six-foot tall mound that will be kind of undulated along there to create some elevation and to create some additional buffering to the residential unit. I'll make note that in the, the staff report, the project description does go through and outlines the differences that the PUD ordinance has that varies from the base zoning standards of multifamily, which is what this was currently zoned. So, they're requesting a rezone to PUD. So, the base zoning would be multifamily, so that would define the uses that are allowed there. And then, the PUD ordinance would define what the development standards are. And so, those development standards are detailed with the total minimum living area, front-side, rear setbacks, building heights, district perimeter, those nature. The landscaping and architectural standards, we've touched on, each unit being two-story, two-car garages. And then, as we go through the decision criteria for a rezone and kind of reminder for some and info for new, the rezone process starts with you, with the concept plan and the PUD ordinance for your consideration. Then, you're asked to make a recommendation to city council. Council would then consider it at a first reading, and then, at a second reading, would determine whether to approve or deny the rezone application. So, before you tonight is a rezone request, looking for a recommendation to council. And as we determine the recommendation, there are decision criteria that we need to follow, statutory criteria, and I'll just touch on these briefly. The first criteria is the extent to which the proposal fulfills the requirements and intent of the comprehensive plan. And we will say that the 2019 City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan does designate this area as residential, and the residential land use provides for primarily single-family, detached housing, townhomes, and duplexes, as well as multifamily housing of all levels. So, this proposed development by the applicant does fit within the character and standards of our comprehensive plan. The current conditions and character of the current structures and uses in the zoning district need to be taken into consideration. So, the Corbett Towns PUD is in an area of the community that does right now currently contain a mix of commercial with some senior living, institutional with the hospital across the street, and then, a variety of residential uses in the area. The proposal by the applicant is consistent with the current conditions and the character within the area. The site is currently zoned, as I mentioned, for multifamily uses, and the proposed PUD provides for a multifamily product type of townhomes, which is the desirable land use for the subject property. It is not anticipated that the development proposed by the applicant will have a substantially negative impact on property values throughout the city as a whole. The proposal represents a high quality of design with various materials, building materials, and landscape and architectural standards, and should have a positive impact on home values. And then, the proposed site is an infill location across from Witham Hospital and Crown Point Assisted Living, and it's just a half a mile north of the primary shopping center within our city. So, the site will be served by existing utilities. Sanitary sewer is already existing, south and adjacent to the site, and then, water is along State Road 39, thus representing responsible growth and development for the city. So, in review of the submitted planned unit development rezoned ordinance as presented, Lebanon planning staff finds compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance established decision criteria and recommends the Plan Commission for the Planned Unit Development Rezone and Ordinance to the common council with a favorable recommendation. And happy to answer any questions on the Corbett Towns PUD rezone request.
I have a question for you, Matt. I know that normally we don't see it, but with the density there, where's all the fire hydrants going to be?
The fire hydrants will be along the street as required per city engineering and street design standards.
Want to make sure, because that one starts, it's going to go quick.
Sure, sure. And again, this is a concept plan. This is before you tonight for a rezone request. The applicant will be required to come back with a primary plat and a more specific detailed site plan. So, it'll demonstrate where the drainage is, where the fire hydrants are located, all of that good stuff. So, again, that would come back before the Plan Commission for review.
Any other questions for Matt?
Yeah, the street standards, are we talking, they will be like, basically, the width of most of our, most of our newer subdivisions right now?
Yes.
You could actually park on both sides of the street, still have barely wide access to get through?
The, yes, the width of the road will meet our City of Lebanon street standards. Because of the type of development, the on-street parking is not, because each unit has a driveway, so there really will not be place for off-street, or for on-street parking. So, but it is wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic, and it does meet all of our City of Lebanon standards.
Adding on to that, I know in some of those developments, there's areas where they allow for, like, visitor parking. Will this have that?
I'll let the applicant talk more about that, but as of right now, each unit will have four parking spaces, so two inside the garage and two in the driveway, which should be more than sufficient to accommodate a residential neighborhood. So, there could be some on-street parking in between the buildings. If we pull up the aerial, you can see there is some, you know, green space in between the buildings. I can zoom in a little bit more if that could help. So, there is green space between some of the buildings, so there could be possible single-car visitor parking. But again, each unit will have four parking spaces designated for it, so that should more than accommodate for, again, the residential neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Any others? Does the applicant step forward?
You have a presentation.
Yeah. That was a PowerPoint.
Yeah. Sorry.
Good evening, Plan Commission members. Tony Begato with Lenar Homes of Indiana. Our address is 11555 North Meridian Street, Suite 400 in Carmel. Thank you for your time tonight, and I really want to appreciate staff's effort. They've been great and very responsive and fun to work with. Is with me tonight, I have Keith Lash, our VP of Land Development, as well as our engineer, Kevin Sumner from Y, who can help with any other technical questions that may come up that I may not be the answer. I'll try to cover it briefly, because Matt did cover a lot of it. So, as we're proposing, it is a PUD. Currently, it's zoned multifamily. The multifamily zoning would allow apartments by rights, but it doesn't address townhomes. So, with townhomes, we're selling individual lots. They're for sale, fee simple lots or home sites, and so, that's not accommodated under the multifamily. And in the single-family residential zones, there weren't standards to address that. So, when we discussed this with staff in the beginning, we felt the PUD was the best route to go. As described, it is on the west side of State Road 39. It's 12 acres, part of another larger parent parcel that was rezoned and annexed previously. It's south of 300, and as mentioned, again, annexed in 2021, so it's part of the city's jurisdiction, zoned multifamily. So, again, would allow for apartments on the entire project area of the site that's in yellow when it was annexed. We are looking at only the 12-acre portion of the property, and again, currently vacant on our portion. As described, the site plan is pretty, pretty simple. There's not a lot of land to design much differently than this. So, we have a main road coming in off of State Road 39. We are providing additional 20-foot of right-of-way per indot and the thoroughfare plan, as well as there'll be an eight-foot path along our section of the road and the landscape buffering that was covered. We will work with staff and indot on access and any concerns as we develop our primary plat and address tack comments. There's a secondary access that connects to the existing stub street in the Meadow Wing subdivision that any future development of commercial, you know, apartments under the existing zoning would be required to connect to as well. And then, we have the future stub street to the north for the remaining parent parcel when it develops. So, there'll be three access points when it's fully developed with the parcel to the north. In total, again, 17 buildings, so 96 townhomes. These are for-sale, individual, fee simple homes. They're just attached to each other in buildings. We have 1.76 acres of dry retention area there to the south in that kind of darker green color. And then, we have the 20-foot perimeter landscape buffer that he covered in those red areas that surround the existing residential areas. Our townhomes are two-story in nature, so these fit more of a suburban style versus like a three-story or four-story you see in an urban nature. These are meant to be in a suburban community. They range between 1,700 and 1,800 square feet. They are, in our opinion, high-quality design for these townhomes. There's a lot of articulation in massing in these front facades, a lot of color variation, and you can see some different changes in the roof pitches that we provide, that provides a nice quality design for this product. And they also have rear yards. With other townhomes, when they're alley-loaded, lots, they don't have rear yards. So, when people barbecue, it'll be on their front, either in front of their patio, or sometimes, you know, in the back, on the driveway. In this situation, they get a rear yard like a typical single-family home, and that seems to be really positive in the market. They can put a patio feature up. They can put a barbecue in their backyard versus something in the front patio or in their driveway. And then, Lenar, as a builder, we have in our home, our base plans, all homes, townhomes, is what's called "everything included." So, we have a lot of standard features that are in a home that is not part of any other builders, what they would provide as an option. So, here's our typical, kind of an interior and a bedroom setting. We provide decorative cabinets and fixtures by fault, or part of the package of the home, high-end flooring. Hardwood flooring is part of the first floor of the kitchen area and bathroom areas. We provide kitchen appliances that could range from stainless steel to other types of color depending on the product we're building. And we provide a lot of smart technology, so we have like ring doorbells, energy-efficient Wi-Fi-enabled thermostats, and those are included in the home price. So, that helps elevate our home in value and cost in the buying market. And there's more features that I didn't want to list of his lot. So, in summary, as Matt mentioned, we are in compliance with the UDO findings for the rezone. We believe it's an appropriate land use and location. Instead of doing a multifamily apartment site, we would have for ownership. And then, we believe they're high-quality townhomes and just available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
On the townhomes?
Yes.
Will the owners be responsible for the exterior? How, or will they, would there be an HOA that will take care of the exterior and they're required, they're, take care of the interior? How does that work?
Yeah, the HOA will be responsible for the exterior, so they have a uniform look and color scheme throughout the lifespan of the development.
So, like, if the roof is affected, that's not going to be on the homeowner? That would be on the?
The roof itself, is that through insurance, the HOA? Yeah, the roof is covered in the HOA as well. Oh, and I did, I would address, I go back to, and if we could pull up the site plan. There is additional parking I wanted to address that's on the west side where we had the buildings. Was there a way to pull the site plan up? Okay. So, at this scale, it's not easy to read, but we do have... So at this scale, it's not easy to read, but we do have, we have, from I remember, at least about six, I believe, parking spaces that can accommodate within this section of our plan and also on this side, since these units will come down a roadway that has a hammerhead turnaround for fire access. And so there'll be open spaces for parking there. And we have considered if we need to, we have looked at, there's potential for openings within gaps in the building where maybe it'll fit one or two more spaces as well.
That would be nice.
And our driveways are also 20 feet behind the back of the sidewalk, so it shouldn't leave any issues with cars overhanging into the sidewalk as well.
That would be nice to have extra parking in between some of the units.
Correct.
Just have two questions. Will these be owner-occupied all the time? They won't be able to be, will they be able to be rented or?
Well, they'll be for sale. Now, they can be, if an investor buys them, they may rent them out, but we are not building them as rentals. They are for sale.
Right.
So.
And on the backside, will that just be open green space or will they be fenced?
It's usually open. We don't usually fence it off. I don't know, there's drainage requirements that we have to meet where our discharge is, so I'm not sure if we can fence it off.
Okay.
Does Lenar neighborhoods and townhome neighborhoods, do you have like a capacity on how many can be rentals, like a percentage? Or is it just open, like they can do with it what they want? So it could end up being a fully rented subdivision?
Yeah, we don't typically, unless the city has like a, something in an ordinance, we would follow. We don't have those.
Would it be something in the HOA that is going to be put in there?
We don't put them in the initial CCN hours, but when the HOA takes over, they can amend them, yes, and add that in there.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, just while you're right there. So you mentioned exterior, but what about like standard lawn maintenance, that sort of thing, mowing the yards? Is that going to be on the HOA or is that going to be each individual?
The front yards are covered by the HOA. All the exteriors covered by the HOA.
Okay, perfect.
That's good.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and discuss docket 23 dash 36 or make a comment better yet?
Good evening. I'm Phil Ludlow. I'm a real estate broker, representing Janay Simmons. She lives at 2880 North State Road 39. She is the property owner immediately to the north, on the north side of this project. So she's got some concerns with the project and just want to make sure you're aware of everything going on right now with the county. The traffic is the number one issue right now throughout, you know, right there, 39 and 300. And a lot of it is the Lilly construction traffic at this point. And according to the county, their, their traffic count right now with just construction traffic is 2,900 extra vehicles per day just from the construction. That's according to the county. So, so she's got concerns with adding more traffic coming out of this project into this area right here. That's a big concern. And access egress is very difficult for her right now, getting in and out of her driveway. She's, the, the amount of traffic that's, that's come up in the last few months from the Lilly project and the speeds at which people drive coming into, you know, south on 39 into Lebanon and north headed out of Lebanon, you know, gearing up, speeding up, getting out of Lebanon. So it's difficult for her to get in and out of her driveway. The county on Thursday night, last Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday night, introduced motions, you know, some ideas of having a temporary stoplight put up at this location, 39 and 300, as well as some other spots. And they said they were working with indot on doing that, you know, for maybe during the period of time that they're building the Lilly project, which is like three years. So, so if that temporary light comes into play and they do put it up for that project, that will additionally block up traffic on 39 in front of her house, trying to get in and out of her house because now that light, which is trying to control traffic for, for the Lilly construction traffic, is going to hurt her ingress and egress even more because it's just going to line up traffic trying to get through that, wait to get through that light. So, so that, that's an issue. So I don't know if, in tech standards, if they go to indot and work with them on, on their traffic counts and turn lanes and widening of lanes. Additionally, getting closer to the 300 north intersection, having additional turn lanes there. So, so that, that's another issue she's concerned about. The future subdivision that's been announced going on at Spring Creek, there at 300 north and 39, and possible grocery store going in there. So, so with this project going in, will you take in that future project into account as far as traffic studies, traffic lights or no traffic lights, drainage from that site going on there? So if you'll take that into consideration as well. So there again, just increased traffic. Surface drainage, of course, is always an issue and just hoping that this project, improving this farm field, doesn't shove water off onto her property, you know, to, in keeping with the standards to make the new subdivision dry, pushing the stormwater onto her property. Additionally, there's another piece there to the north of this subdivision that they want to put in. That's also a Brandonberg property that is vacant at this point. He called it the master parcel. And what's going to happen with that? And how's that going to affect as far as drainage, as far as traffic, as far as the, you know, traffic light at 300 and 39? What's that going to do to that, too? So there again, another future project that's not included with this project, even though it meets a lot of standards, there's a lot of other projects right here in this area that could affect this project and these existing homeowners in this area. So just want the council to consider that as well as they, as you go forward. The other thing is rental restrictions and are they going to be considered at all as part of the project in any way, shape, or form? And that's, that's a whole nother topic, but just wanting to make sure that the council considers that as a, as a future issue with occupancy of these townhomes. So with that, I leave it to you. I don't have anything else other than that. Do you have anything else you can think of?
No.
This is Janay Simmons. She's the homeowner to, immediately to the north of this project. She adjoins, she's on the adjoining property to the north.
Yeah, thank you.
It's just that, also that other development that's part of the Brandonberg, they're talking about townhomes and apartments. So, I mean, that's even more use of the roads and everything, the traffic.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? I'm not seeing any more. We'll close the public hearing. Matt or Michael, have any further comment? Or would like to respond to some of those?
Yeah, I can touch on a couple of those things. One of the points was drainage, as I think I mentioned with the, the school development. Any new development within the city is required to engineer their site to accommodate their stormwater runoff. So this particular site has been engineered with detention ponds that will collect all the additional stormwater runoff, detain that, that water, and then release it at an appropriate rate into the nearby drainage swales. So we have city standards that are pretty stringent on this, and these new developments cannot impose or impair the use of the neighboring properties. So the drainage on the neighboring properties will not get worse. It will either remain the same or get better. So as with any development within the city, we require those developers to accommodate their own drainage to account for it and then release it appropriately to the appropriate drainage swales and ditches. Traffic, we do have a lot going on, and I could tell you that, that traffic is a topic of consideration with every single development. And I may, I know I lean on Kevin a lot, but he's been in a lot of the meetings with indot about State Road 39 and 300, about the developments along 300 or the improvements. I don't know, Kevin, do you have anything from the engineering side you might be able to?
A couple, I guess a couple of things. The Lilly traffic projections that Mr. Ludlow mentioned, that's the peak that they will reach, the 2,900 to 3,000 cars. That is not today. Today, it's a, it's a couple hundred. I think it's around spring of 2024, going into the end of 2024, where traffic starts to ramp up. As you can imagine, construction, as they begin to go vertical with construction and more and more trades are needed on-site, that's when the traffic will increase and hit that peak in late '24 of around 3,000 cars a day. Lilly and the IEDC are working on a number of temporary stoplights. In fact, I believe there are seven temporary stoplights that are proposed, and at least five of those also will require intersection improvements, widening at intersections, adding turn lanes. This is all about trying to counteract that 3,000-car peak that we will see in a little over a year. And those are, will be going into place starting later this summer through next spring to try to accommodate that traffic as it, as it begins to increase. Of course, there's no permits issued from indot right now, but a, an update meeting we had just earlier this afternoon did show a left turn lane. So northbound 39 to westbound 300, there will be a center turn lane. They will widen 39 to the east to allow cars to go around those cars getting into the turn lane, and then there will be a temporary signal. As well as then long-term, there will be a proposed intersection reconstruction at that point, but that would be post-Lilly construction. That would be within a year after, after the interchange, the new interchange at 65 is open.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think I covered a couple of the points that at least were brought up there.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
Just to address one of the other ones, I share a similar concern with the rental properties and what some of our neighboring towns have gone through with this. So I've actually talked myself with a couple of council members on different ways that those can be constructed that are win-wins, right? Because we, we need to be pro, pro-development, pro-developer, folks that want to invest in our city, but we also need to maintain some of the integrity of the city itself. So hopefully, we're, we're able to find some of those balances that we can address, some of that rental piece. I don't know that addressing at the HOA level or the individual developer level really holds the water that it, that it can from a city ordinance standpoint. So I think it'd be more important on that side. So if you do have those concerns, definitely reach out to your councilmen, voice those concerns, and hopefully we can get something designed.
Thank you. Anything else for Matt or the applicant?
I was just going to add one thing with the traffic. So we will, there is a TAC comment to do a traffic study, so as part of our primary plat, if this zoning is approved, we come back for the subdivision plat, we'll have a traffic study. That traffic engineer will look at the neighboring properties and any proposed or future development that they're aware of, they'll look at that, and we'll do a cumulative study. So our impacts will be considered with the other properties that were brought up by the, the concerned residents. So that is part of the study that will be done, and we'll have to see what any improvements, if any. We have such a small frontage, I don't see what we, what we can contribute, but overall, will be added into the other properties that may develop around there. I just wanted to add that note.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good point to point out to the public, as Tony just mentioned, this is, this is step one. This is not construction plan approval, this is not building permitting, this is just, just zoning to allow for the project.
I'm looking for a recommendation to the council on docket 23 dash 36.
I'll make a motion to forward the Plan Unit of Development Rezone Ordinance to the Common Council with a favorable recommendation.
One second. First and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstains? Recommendation carries? Next up, we've got docket 23 dash 37. SNC Property Group is requesting a development plan approval for a proposed new building addition to 235 West Cox Avenue. It is currently zoned PBI, planned business industrial, and is in the Interstate Overlay District. Matt?
All right. This will be the, the last time that you've got to deal with me this evening, then I'll turn it over to Ben. Let me get the site plan pulled up for you so that we can... So we're moving to the south side of town now. Some of you may be familiar with this site location. This is the former Bottoms Up Bar and Grill located off of State Road 39 and I-65, kind of tucked in back there behind the Flying J truck stop. The applicant has purchased the existing building in sight and has started substantial rehab on that building and is proposing a, about a 4,200 square foot, I'm sorry, 3,200 square foot warehouse addition as part of the existing building. So we have an existing building of 4,700 square feet and is proposing a 3,200 square foot addition, along with the associated parking lot rehabilitation and landscaping to be added. Pull up the site plan and zoom in for you. Maybe zoomed in too much, I'm sorry. So as you can see on the, the site map here, we have the existing building down on the south end, and then the proposed warehouse expansion on the northwest side. They have included updated parking and drive aisles, both on the north side of the building and along the south side of the building. I'll pull up the elevations. This project is a substantial increase or substantial improvement to the existing conditions. Get through all this engineering stuff that Kevin loves.
There we go. Pretty pictures, I got it.
Yes, yeah. It's my favorite part, too. So as you can see, the existing building, building is currently just a light brown brick. The applicant is proposing multiple architectural designs with dark brick, vertical metal siding, wood accents throughout, throughout the project. As you can see, this is facing the existing building. Then you've got the addition here in the middle. This is the rear elevation and then kind of some more up-close and personals with the main entrance of the office space and of the proposed warehouse. So again, the applicant is proposing a, a development plan to add that additional warehouse space and to make those upgrades that I've talked about. The technical advisory committee did review this project. Lebanon Utilities, Electrical Division, Sewer and Water, Lebanon Stormwater, Fire Department, and Engineering all submitted their, their comments that the applicant is either working through or has already addressed. With Lebanon Planning Staff Review, the applicant did earlier this month have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a handful of variances, I think eight in total. One of the reasons, the biggest reasons was the, just the, the site itself. It is zoned industrial and does not account for an industrial development. So the existing building sits less than 50 feet from the existing roadway, which 50 feet is a setback for the industrial zoning district. So that was one of the, the variances they needed. The dumpster screening, sidewalks, they were provided relief from the sidewalk requirement simply because this is a, not a pedestrian area. There is proposal from indot to close Cox Avenue entrance there at State Road 39. So there won't even be vehicle traffic off of State Road 39 on Cox Avenue. They would actually come around through a new proposed development that is behind the Flying J, so they would share the drive of Flying J and drive around to access this property from the northwest. Other variances they were provided were loading boats facing the, the main street. Because it's in the overlay district, we don't allow loading docks to face the road. Minimum building height, we have a 20-foot minimum building height. The applicant's building's only 19 and a half feet, so they needed a variance for six inches. The applicant's building's only 19 and 1/2 feet, so they needed a variance for six inches. We talked about lot plantings earlier with the school. This one, they were provided relief from the lot plantings. Let me pull up the landscape plan. The applicant has provided a significant landscape plan for this property. As you can see, they have building-based landscaping, they have parking lot perimeter, parking lot interior, they've got buffers along the exterior portions of the property. So a significant investment in landscaping for this proposed development, but they did need, they were required to receive some variances for that, just simply because of the lot size and shape. And then the last variance they received was for flagpole height. The applicant's proposing a 60-foot-tall flagpole. The owner is a member of the IBW Union out of Indianapolis, is a proud American, and does propose a large American flag, and then potentially some festive holiday tradition that could be started similar to what happens down on Monument Circle with the IBW. So a 60-foot flagpole is taller than our UDO allows, so they did receive a variance for that. But as we review the other development standards, again, detailed in the staff report, we did review the lot sizes, the frontages, setbacks, building heights, lot coverage, and all of those meet the UDO standards when you also consider the variances that were applied. Parking, there were required 15 spaces, they're providing 17 spaces, 16 of them regular, one of them ADA compliant. The submitted photometric plan does meet the lighting requirements for our UDO standards. We talked about the landscaping. When you take into consideration the variances they received, the landscaping they submitted, the landscaping plan does meet our UDO requirements. Signing package has not been provided, but again, as with all developments, this will be a contingency on your approval as a signage plan to be submitted before any signs or permits are issued or signs installed. And then lastly, the architectural standards. We talked about the difference in architectural standards that the applicant's providing with the wood accents, the fiber cement board, vertical metal siding, dark brick, to go along with the substantial landscaping. Staff is quite in favor of the architectural design that's being proposed for this development. So in review of the submitted development plan as presented, Lebanon Plating Staff does find compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance requirements for this subject site. Staff recommends approval of the subject development plan contingent on the following two conditions. One, that the applicant adequately addresses any remaining City of Lebanon Technical Advisory Committee comments prior to application for any building permits or any site improvements. And secondly, that the applicant submits a signage package that meets all applicable UDO standards prior to the installation of any signs. And with that, quick rundown. Any questions?
Any questions for Matt? Would the applicant like to step forward?
Good evening. I'm Shane Connor. I'm the one that has taken this project on. My wife doesn't know this, so I hope this isn't on YouTube or anything like that. If you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer. You know, I've done all the right things with this. I actually own ATEC Electrical Contractors here in town, where I started ATEC. You know, out of the back of my pickup truck, you know, I'm now, I have 37 employees. So this is where I really want to put, I don't want to call it my headquarters, but my latest endeavor, as my wife would call that again. But anyway, if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer. CBT Architects out of Avon is my architectural firm. GNA Engineering out of Avon, as well as our architectural firm. I'm working with Gary Latt as my civil engineer, and I'm working with Rhonda Fisher as my landscape architect. So of course, we're going to be planning to do the electrical ourselves. I'm working with, I don't know the name of it, they're out of Colfax from my HVAC, but I'm working with a local plumber to help with the plumbing, because I definitely believe in hiring local people to help me out with this. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Questions for Shane? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Docket 23-37, if you'd like to speak, please step forward. Try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Not seeing anybody, we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions for Matt or Shane? Done, seeing none? Okay, I would entertain a motion for the development plan.
That we approve the development plan as presented with the two contingencies, the technical advisory comments, and the signage package.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstains? Development plan is approved. Congratulations. Next up on the docket, we have docket 23-44, consideration of initial zoning classification for a 100% voluntary annexation into the City of Lebanon. It is 40 acres and noted as Mr. Cavendish's property. It is located at 375 West, 375 North, and is currently zoned single-family. Ben?
Evening, commission members. I'll do a quick overview of this here for you. Again, as Mr. Tanny said, this is a 100% voluntary annexation. If they want to pull up the screen for you, I'll give you an idea of where we're looking at. So this is on the north end of town. State Road 39 here is to the west. 375 North is just here to the north of the property, so that means 300 North is just off the property here to the south. Again, as I mentioned, this is a 100% voluntary annexation, so we were approached by the property owner, Mr. Cavendish, to annex this property. There is not a development proposed at this current time. The property owner just recognized that there were some benefits to him from a marketing perspective if the property was already within city limits and had zoning in place, and so he did make the decision to go ahead and request annexation to the city. As you can see here, it does meet our contiguity requirements here. It is contiguous to existing city limits on the south side, and more than meets the 1/8 contiguity requirement. So then, just in terms of process, what's before you and the Plan Commission's role as part of an annexation is to make a recommendation on the initial zoning classification to place on the property. That recommendation then will be passed along to the council, who will then consider the annexation ordinance and the recommendation of the zoning as part of their annexation ordinance. So this would be a first step in a multiple-step process associated with the annexation. You provide the recommendation on the zoning to assign to the property, and then the council then considers the annexation ordinance itself. So this is step one of three in terms of the annexation before it would become effective. The ordinance suggests that where there is not a development proposed and/or a concept plan associated with the property, which we do not have in this case, that the ordinance would recommend or suggest that the default zoning classification of SF, single-family residential, would be placed on that property for the annexation. So with that, then, staff has recommended that the Plan Commission forward a recommendation of the SF zoning classification to the common council for the potential annexed territory. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Ben, I missed spoken beginning. I said it was currently zoned, single-family, but the notes do say...
That is the proposal, yeah.
It does appear that it is agriculture or something very different than single-family.
Correct.
Any questions for Ben?
Is this area considered in any current comprehensive plans?
Let me double-check. I think we do go this far north, and I think I maybe made note of that in my staff report.
It says that it's designated as...
Yeah, I think we do just go this far north, and I think it's shown, it's either as residential, I believe it's residential this far north, is what it shows on the current comprehensive plan. But we're right at the farthest north extent of where our current comprehensive plan goes.
Any other questions? Okay, is there an applicant? Is he here? Does he have to say anything? You'll have to. Okay. This is a public hearing. If you would like to comment on this annexation, please step forward and state your name and your address. Close of public hearing. On that note, I would entertain a recommendation to the council.
I'll make a motion to recommend single-family residential zoning classification to the common council for the annexed territory.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstains? Favorable recommendation passes. Last, Ben, you have a few items on the LEAP project. I'll let you talk about those, and they're noted for discussion only.
Yeah, so we've got two items on there. One, for a comprehensive plan amendment associated with the LEAP district, and then a second one for a LEAP PUD ordinance. The process we're going to go through with this is to introduce both of these two elements tonight. We'll have our consultant kind of talk through those two elements and some of the background associated with those, and kind of what to expect in terms of how the documents will be prepared. And then, the expectation is then, if there are any initial comments or questions or concerns from the public, we'll take those into consideration tonight. Certainly, the PUD ordinance, the draft has not been distributed yet, it's still under construction. So as soon as that is ready, probably in the next week to 10 days, we will distribute it to Plan Commission members, we'll put it on our website, make sure everybody gets a copy of that. The next step then would be on June 29th from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m., we're going to have an open house here in this building and the conference room directly next door, and then we'll have all the details related to the comprehensive plan and PUD ordinance available at that time for people to be able to digest, provide feedback and additional comments at that time. The next step then would be to come back to this commission at the July meeting, I believe it's July 17th, at the regularly scheduled meeting. We'll then give a final presentation on both of those two elements, the comprehensive plan and the PUD ordinance, to the Plan Commission. Again, address any comments, and then we would be expecting or anticipating to request a recommendation from the Plan Commission on those two items. Again, for both the PUD ordinance and the comprehensive plan, the Plan Commission's role is to provide a recommendation to the common council. So it would be step one in a multiple-step process, again, in terms of adopting those two elements. So the PUD ordinance itself would go to the common council, and that would be an ordinance, so it would take a couple of meetings of the council before that theoretically could be adopted. Any amendments to the comprehensive plan are adopted via resolution at one meeting. So the reason we're doing both of these two now, again, we've talked about the PUD ordinance related to LEAP since the first annexation last summer, and that was always the endgame in terms of the zoning for these properties, was that we would create a LEAP zoning district kind of as an intermediary that would have, you know, the setbacks and landscaping that we anticipated. But the goal really was to establish a comprehensive PUD ordinance that addressed everything from the setbacks to landscaping, architectural design, transportation, et cetera. I think I understand that the current draft is about 80 pages long for this PUD ordinance that's under construction, so it is an extensive and detailed document that will address all those elements. One, to accommodate and set the stage for the development, but two, also provide protections both for that development and also for people that live in and around that area. So that's really the goal there, is to address all of those elements for this LEAP area. They'll, and the consultant, their application will show you a map, the PUD ordinance would associate only to properties that have been annexed within what is the proposed LEAP area to the west and north of the community. So if a property has not been annexed, it is not within our jurisdiction, and we have no jurisdiction to assign zoning to those properties. So this is only to properties that have currently been annexed, and they'll show you the map of where that is here in a little bit. On the comprehensive planning side, and certainly, the LEAP district, or the idea of the LEAP district was not something that we certainly contemplated four years ago when we went through our comprehensive planning exercise. And it's certainly a development and an initiative that represents something that we really need to address in the comprehensive plan. So this is going to happen in two phases. What we're doing with this current comprehensive plan amendment is essentially what I would say memorializing the LEAP district by establishing a future land use on our future land use map that identifies the LEAP zoning district and then defines what that concept means in terms of what the LEAP district is, and some of the overall elements associated with the LEAP district like transportation, landscaping, environmental issues, those sorts of things that you would expect in a comprehensive plan document. And MKSK will walk through that here in a little bit. The second phase, which will come later this year and into next year, is we need to look at our overall comprehensive plan, because in addition to the LEAP district, there's been another other developments that have happened that have caused us to make some left turns and right turns that we didn't necessarily anticipate four years ago. So that will be a second phase, we go back through and address the rest of our comprehensive plan and the future land use map, and try to figure out what those next steps are for the city over the next five-plus years. So just to differentiate a little bit between the two, a comprehensive plan is not a legal document, it is a guide. So it does not establish zoning on properties, it does not indicate properties available for development necessarily or properties for sale. It's just a guide looking at the future of that area and saying, hey, if this area were to develop in the future, this is what we think is the most appropriate land use for the area. So it is not a legal document, it does not restrict uses, it merely is a guide. The PUD ordinance, though, is a legal document, so those properties that are currently in the city limits will be assigned the PUD ordinance zoning, and that will regulate all land uses, setbacks, landscaping, et cetera, for those that are in the city. But the comprehensive plan will extend beyond the city limits as it already does, and kind of looks as if land were annexed to the city and were to develop, this is what we think is the future for this area. So that's somewhat of the differentiation between the two. And so again, as I mentioned initially, this is just for introduction tonight, we have MKSK here to walk through a presentation for you and walk through those details. But first, I want to have Scott Alexander come up and just kind of talk about how we got to this point and what's next for this.
Actually, while I'm doing that, I'll pull the presentation up so it's ready for him. You've seen me before, Scott Alexander. I'm outside counsel for IEDC, and I just wanted to briefly supplement a couple of the things that Ben has said, so we're kind of clear on how these puzzle pieces fit together. First of all, what will come about over the next several meetings is not going to relate to the Lilly site. Wanted to make that clear. That site has been zoned, development plan approved, and construction is ongoing. So what we're going to talk about is other areas that IEDC has annexed and has been annexed into the city. So what is that? That's about 1,000 acres that was in the first annexation along with Lilly. And as you recall, there was a second annexation that was around 5,500 acres. So IEDC, with respect to that, those properties that have been annexed, and now Lebanon has jurisdiction, that's what we're talking about with respect to the proposed PUD that is being developed. Now, you have all seen stats, which are true, that IEDC controls more than just the 1,000 acres plus the other 5,500 acres, which is another 6,500 acres. You've seen stats that are closer to 8,000 or 9,000 acres, and that's true. But those have not been annexed into the city, and so there's no jurisdiction at this point. We would anticipate at some point that those would be annexed into the city, but you have to go through the contiguity process, et cetera. So that's how the puzzle pieces fit together, is as Ben indicated, when we annexed in, we had the LEAP district, which was important because it allowed IEDC then to market those properties as being, you know, zoned in a manner for an innovation district, and that has yielded great fruits in those negotiations, and they're ongoing. But then the next phase is to allow, is to hopefully get a PUD that allows all the types of uses and the green space, et cetera, that we would envision for the LEAP district. And toward that end, IEDC has retained, and then these folks are going to talk the rest of the evening on this, MKSK, which is a national firm that does these sorts of planning all across Indiana and actually across the country as well. And so behind the scenes, these folks have been working tirelessly with IEDC and its vision, but also with the city folks, and to some extent, coordinating with county folks as well, to try to put all of this together. So tonight, what we have asked MKSK to do is just to give you an overall 10,000-foot preview of what we're doing, the types of things that they're doing, and then in the next meeting, then we'll get into the real nuts and bolts of this formally. Any questions before I turn it over to MKSK?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to try to make this full screen, and then we're going to share this presentation up on screen. Do I need to do anything special to get it up here? Okay, we're good. All right, so my name's Aaron Kowalski. Thanks for having us this evening. I'm a senior associate and urban planner at MKSK. I work out of our Indianapolis office. And I've been collaborating closely with the folks at IEDC, City of Lebanon, as well as TAF for over a year now on the master planning of the LEAP Lebanon district. And as Scott mentioned, we've also been engaged with the PUD. So what I'm here to kind of discuss, and then I'll introduce my colleague Carly, is really to provide an overview. And for those on the commission, we have provided some supplemental documents. So within that, you'll see a concept plan, which is an executive summary of the overall master plan, as well as a draft of the design guidelines that will supplement the PUD ordinance that you all will be reviewing a little later this summer. So within the concept plan, you know, as part of an overview, we have existing conditions. We have a concept plan itself, which is designed to be flexible, but then also to really showcase the vision for the build out of this entire district. And I'll share some visuals up on screen for those in the room and then precedent imagery. And so that all kind of builds the story of the master plan. A master plan is a vision. It is designed as a living, breathing document. And the comprehensive plan, again, memorializes, as Ben mentioned, the land use that would then be captured within this master plan, the recommendations from IEDC. And then, as we then work towards a PUD ordinance, that's where it's all codified. So the idea is the master plan comes first, it sets the vision, then the city would then come with their comprehensive plan, work to get that guidance document in order, and then it would be codified into ordinance in a way that is satisfactory to commission and to the council. So as we get into the comprehensive plan amendment, we have prepared, as Ben mentioned, some initial land use plan updates. We'll talk through that. And then my colleague Carly is going to give an overview of some of the things that you will be seeing in the PUD ordinance. The PUD ordinance will be supported by the design guidelines, which you have as well, which includes additional information and recommendations for development. And then we'll talk through next steps and schedule. So the concept plan is really about the project vision. So the vision of this development is such that, you know, it is going to be a very significant economic development generator, job generator for the next several decades. That's how this place is designed. Obviously, it's going to take time for this to occur. There's been initial investments, for instance, in the Lilly area, which of course has been kind of zoned separately from this process, but is supportive of this overall vision of creating a place where we do have really advanced manufacturing at the highest level that is then supported by a mixed-use village that really can be complementary and supplemental to the City of Lebanon. So that's how the vision is designed. As we go through the concept plan, we talk through existing conditions, regional connections, transportation, natural resources. And really, the idea as we're creating this vision and then what you'll see in the PUD is we're trying to write in a lot of language that is going to promote a very high quality of design in all of these districts, a high quality of natural resource enhancement, preservation through innovative stormwater, through ways of creating naturalized corridors, supporting investments such as the trail that has gone through this site already, as well as trying to create a mixed-use village with a large kind of park area that could really enhance some of the streams that run through this area. So you'll see that in the concept plan where we talk about transportation, roads, streets, utilities, natural resources, development, land use and character. So as we think about the site today, as Scott mentioned, you know, it's about 9,000 acres, give or take, and you can see the boundary. So this is the LEAP district as it, you know, would be upon full master plan build out. So you see the existing conditions, mostly agricultural. We've identified where there are creeks. We've identified the Big Four Trail, as well as roadways throughout this area. And so the concept plan, which you see here, so this does depict some parcels that are not currently controlled and may not come under control by the developer, but it really is bringing forward the master plan vision in a land use way focused on, and for those that can't read the key here, the yellow area would be the mixed-use village center. So think of that as a walkable area with a mix of office, research and development, restaurants, and residential properties kind of in the center of this district and up along that Big Four Trail, which we envision as being enhanced over time and improved upon. Separated from that area, you see some areas in green. Those are areas that we have designated for stormwater management, for enhancement of creeks and buffers, as well as opportunities for kind of the edges to be preserved and for them to be some separation between the mixed-use area and some of the more intensive uses. The area in kind of a dark purple is the mega site development. So that would be the larger acreage, kind of not quite at 1,000 acres, but near 1,000 acres and over for those major site developments. And then the lighter purple would be advanced manufacturing, which is the type of manufacturing if you think about the Lilly investment. That is what would fit into that area. As we think about precedent imagery, another way of thinking through this to the top left would be the mega site. So those are those large, regional, statewide economic development initiatives that could bring major employment to this area. Advanced manufacturing is very high-tech. Think pharmaceutical, think things in that lens. Residential and mixed-use, we've included flexibility within both the master plan and within the proposed PUD within this district to allow for the mixed-use development to occur in a variety of different ways. It could have mixed use, some degree of multifamily, but then also allows for things like town homes, paired patio homes, and even some small-scale, single-family homes as this district built out over time. So I'll next get to the comprehensive plan amendment then unless you want me to see if the commission has questions or comments. Okay. I'll keep rolling and we can take questions at the end. So as part of the comprehensive plan, as Ben mentioned, this is the policy document that takes that vision and brings it forward from a land use perspective. You'll see a map here in a moment that talks about the comprehensive plan today and then how it's been modified through this process that we'll be introducing here in July. So we've updated the future land use map with that newly annexed property. We've thought through initiatives and objectives for this district. We have an upcoming open house and Carly will talk a little bit more about that towards the end on June 29th. So that'll be an opportunity for the community to learn a little bit more about both the master plan and comprehensive plan and the PUD. And then as we talk through kind of the remaining parts of the process, we'll bring it back to you on July 17th at your regularly scheduled meeting. And then we do plan on taking it towards the end of July to the council for adoption via resolution. All this information will be updated on the city's website, specific to planning. So we're working closely with staff to do so. The next map here is the, you can see the bubble on the top left, that's the LEAP district. And then the comprehensive plan as it exists today. And so what we've done is proposed an amendment to the comprehensive plan that calls out in dark purple the LEAP innovation district. And the comprehensive plan amendment will have descriptions to that end of kind of what the land uses within that district are. But this will kind of, as Ben mentioned, kind of memorialize the fact that this land use has been added to the comprehensive plan with subsequent further changes later on that are then going to be looking at the whole community and how things will interact with the LEAP district here in the future. With that, I'd love to turn it over to my colleague Carly.
Hello, my name is Carly Lemon. I'm a planner with MKSK and I'm going to walk you through the LEAP district ordinance. So just as a refresher, a planned unit development or a PUD is a development that follows the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance that are listed and meets the specific requirements that are required for a PUD document, including the different designations and as well as the different standards that are associated with that. The PUD will have its own set of standards that are developed. We'll see an outline of that later on in these slides. But just to refresh on the purpose of the PUD, specifically this LEAP PUD is to support the goals of the LEAP concept plan and design guidelines to create a set of standards that is cohesive for design and aesthetics throughout the LEAP district, create a specific design and community for the LEAP district, allow for a mix of uses within the LEAP district and specifically, as Aaron mentioned, preserve natural features within the LEAP district. And I don't know if Scott wants to add anything to this slide, but this is the PUD district boundary that is shown in purple. And like you mentioned before, some of the properties that are not currently owned, but are around that district boundary. And what you're seeing here now is the district ordinance outline. So these are some general, high-level topics that will be addressed in the proposed PUD, including supporting exhibits for the concept plan and the design guidelines, as well as boundary maps, declaration of covenants, and land use and parking exhibits that are associated with that that give more detail on those specific use categories, as well as parking requirements within the district, and then the associated design guidelines. So this is not an extensive list. There will be some additions as we go through and create the PUD. So this is just a general overview of what you'll see when that comes in in July. And then as Ben and Aaron mentioned, the community open house will be next week from 4:30 to 7:30 on June 29th. And this will give an opportunity to talk with city and consultants and legal professionals to that as we review and edit the LEAP district ordinance. And we'll consider the information that's provided by project stakeholders and the general public at this meeting, as well as we'll have a Plan Commission public hearing in July with more information directly on the PUD and what will be within that document. Next steps? Keep going?
Yeah, please.
All right. So as you can see, this is a next steps list of what the process will be for the PUD, as well as the comp plan. So you'll see the different dates that are associated with the open house, the Plan Commission public hearing on July 17th, the first reading within city council, and the continuous review and input from both MKSK and the legal team, city staff, and the public as well, and anything that the Plan Commission may bring up as concerns for the PUD.
Maybe just to cap it off before we ask for any comments, questions from Plan Commission and allow some public comment. If anybody from the public would like a copy of this slide deck, please send a request to me and Matt Reynolds in our office and we'll be happy to make that available to you. And then we'll also work with the mayor's office to get it posted out on our website so it can be available there as well. And then as I mentioned, there will be two significant meetings where we can provide public comment or receive public comment. But if anybody has any comments, questions at any point between now and the July 17th Plan Commission meeting, please reach out to our office. We'll be happy to accept those comments at any point, certainly in addition to these meetings that we discussed. So we'll accept comments at any time. We'll make sure to pass them off to MKSK and get them incorporated where appropriate. But certainly would like to hear any comments or questions from the Plan Commission at this time. I know this was kind of a high-level overview and there's a lot of detail yet to come. If you have any comments or guidance at this point, we'd be happy to take it. If there's any comments or questions for public, we'll take those at this time as well as we move through this process to develop the comprehensive plan amendment and the PUD ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I just have a question. On the concept plan, where just south of Lilly, it's now advanced manufacturing. I think in the beginning it was corporate offices, maybe? Is that correct?
Yeah, so advanced manufacturing corporate office would be allowed there and of course encouraged along with that, research and development, other things that are emerging in that area. If you think about Lilly, there's an opportunity for that type of really high-tech manufacturing. We also understand there may be some associated type developments. Think of pharmaceutical suppliers, things like that that may occur in this area. So the idea is there are a little less intensity use. And in, you know, in general, you know, really those high-tech research and development type uses that we'd like to see outside of the mega site development, but in support of the mega site development. We may also see uses that would be supportive of kind of the whole district. Think of things like training facilities, even things like daycare that are going to be really important as this area develops. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. And also on the community meeting on the 29th at 4:30, what was the location of that?
City Hall.
Room. Room back here.
It'll be here in City Hall on the second floor. There's a community room just behind the council chambers and we'll hold it just right here on the second floor. So it'll be right here in this building.
Any other questions for the team from the commission?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. And Ben, we are going to have a public hearing. Is that correct?
Amen.
Public comment better yet.
Yeah, I would say this is not necessarily the formal public hearing. We'll hold that at the July meeting, but if there's any general public comment at this time, we'd be happy to accept that now too as well.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open up for public comment. Try to keep your comments to three minutes or less if you want to sign in. State your name and address, please.
I told myself I wasn't going to do this again, but I can't help myself. First of all, first comment I have to say is wow, this is an impressive display of whatever. My major question, and I don't know, I would assume the Planning Commission would be the place I would come to ask this.
What was your name and your address?
Jerome Harris, and I live at 2305 Windhaven.
Thank you.
Which is right off of 65 and 52, which is probably going to be involved in all of this. My one big question, because I'm kind of trying to look outside the box, and I assume you people are the ones that maybe can answer this. What is the end game? What, when have we had enough? When have we have used all of our resources, our water, our sewage, our schools, our streets, our traffic, our environment, the creeks that run through the town, all of this? Have we done a study about that? Have we looked at where the water is coming from? Have we looked at the sewage treatment plant? Is it sufficient for all of this stuff that's coming? All of these houses that we are building, all the traffic? I went to the meeting last Thursday night and I was very eye-opening to me that a lot of things were pushed through and then the infrastructure wasn't there. And now we're running around with our heads chopped off trying to fix roads so that we can fix Lilly's instead of fixing the roads and then having Lilly come in and do their thing. And I'm afraid that it's going to continue to happen because we don't have the infrastructure. Every time I drive up 39, I think, my God, what's going to happen? I worked with them for almost 12 years. I'm a registered nurse by profession and I do, I love this community. I've lived here quite a while. I've taken care of patients. I've been involved in things that I thought were important, but I guess, have we done studies? Is there studies out there that says, yes, we have enough water? Yes, we have enough sewage? Yes, we have enough electricity? Has that been done? Can it be done? Or do, every one of these projects that have been talked about tonight, they said, well, the fire department gave their approval, the blah, blah, blah gave their approval. But I guess I wonder where it all ends. I mean, there's got to be a point where you can say, that's it, we can't take anymore. Maybe I'm incorrect. I hope I am, but I just, I get very concerned about, about money. I mean, this is what it all comes down to, folks, whether you want to admit it or not, somebody's making money here. And that's the truth. That's the reason these people come and build these buildings, because they make money. That's the reason they're putting these, somebody's getting money out of this. I'm not saying any of you, I'm not saying, definitely not me, but I just, I'm just worried about the big picture. And I don't know if there's anybody here that has those answers. I don't know. I just want to know that we've looked at all that and we're sure that we can do this.
Yeah, that's three minutes.
And that we're not just, yeah, go ahead.
That's three minutes, that's it.
I'm sorry?
You just finished your thought there.
Well, I'm, that's the question I have. Is there somebody in this group here or somebody in the state or in the city that has looked at gallons per person and?
We'll address all the comments at the end, whether it be Ben or.
I'm done.
Kevin would love to talk about resources for now.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerome.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Glenn Beazey. I live at 71 South 200 West on the edge of Lebanon here. And where we currently live, the colors keep changing every time the slides come up. We've been approached, then we were ghosted. We don't know now. But my concern is that it seems like a lot of this development gets done around people who are currently living in an area and they get pinched, they get trapped. And we get to live through the worst part of it, which is the construction of all this. The roads get tore up, we get the trash and the dust and everything else that blows into our beautiful homes that we work so hard for. And at this point, myself and the 13 other people that live down my road are kind of feeling like that's what we get to look forward to, which is not the bill that was presented to us originally. So that's a concern of mine. And then with everything else that's being developed, it seems like the last thing that gets done is concern about the road. Zionsville grew and grew and grew, and Oak Street is still a two-lane road and roundabouts are getting built in the middle of this and traffic is horrendous over there. When 267 Bridge was done, boom, Amazon builds and that whole area blows up and the road can't handle it. It's brand new and it already isn't big enough to handle it. So now you're going to put a school out in another area with intersections that are compound angles and two-lane roads and people that already live there. And the road always seems to be the last thing to be considered or improved. It seems to me like it's still putting the cart before the horse. I would encourage you all to spend a week in a high-profile vehicle like a dump truck or a bus or something, not just one day, but a whole week, all day, every day for a whole week, and hit these intersections and go in and out of these places with the pretty landscape at the entrance and exit where you can't see into the intersection at all. Where you come down these narrow roads and you tell me people aren't going to park on the road, but you know, two cars in a garage and two cars in a driveway. When people have family, when people come over to our house, they don't all carpool. Everybody drives separately. So these people that are going to live in townhomes, they're not going to be able to have company here. If they are, they're going to be parking on the road. Next thing you know, a big, high-profile vehicle can't get down there or anything like that. And these things just don't seem to be considered. And I drive a high-profile vehicle every day. I have to fight it. I know Boone County is going to grow and I know that a lot of this is going to go in regardless of what we have to say. We've come to accept the fact that Lebanon as we knew it is gone. It's going to turn into the next big spoke in the wheel of the Megalopolis of Indianapolis moving forward, moving north. We know it's happening. Just ask for a little more consideration for the folks that work here, pay taxes here, live here, and have to traverse and commute it every day, not just consider the folks that are coming in from Carmel and Indianapolis that are here making money and using taxpayer money to do so. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pamela Weisel. I'm here with my husband and my daughter, Chris and Abby. We live at 3620 West 25 North in Lebanon. So we moved here in August of last year. We came from Indianapolis. We moved in and about six weeks after we got here, we were approached by someone, I believe it was an attorney with the state of Indiana, who was interested in purchasing our property. And, you know, we kind of have similar, my question is, before I leave here, is there someone that we can get, you know, like contact information so that we can start discussing, you know, what our next steps are going to be, where we fall in the scope of this project? Is the offer that they're making on our real estate an offer that, you know, makes sense in light of us just moving here and interest rates, you know, the Fed? Everything is really, it's not a great time for us to try to move out of our home and or even think about moving out of our home. So I'm just hoping, we're not opposed to that. I mean, we are reasonable people in terms of understanding that, you know, cities grow and that growth is important to the community and, you know, to us as well. We don't, we don't want to try to stop anything from happening here. We just want to make sure that, you know, we know who we're talking to, we know what we're dealing with, and that we can, we can make a decision based on that. I have seen, you know, the maps up here and I have no idea what, you know, what I'm looking at even. So that would just be helpful to me. I don't know if anybody else here is kind of feeling that way as well. We're just kind of lost and we would appreciate, you know, just, just kind of trying to understand more of what the scope of this is and where we fall in it and what our next steps are going to be. We would love to stay in Lebanon. It doesn't look like that's going to happen. There are like two houses on the market right now that, that we would be interested in getting in. We moved where we moved for a reason. And right after, I mean, right before we moved, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. So, you know, this is just like one thing right after the other. So, you know, we were looking for a place where we could get involved with the community and kind of be close, but also kind of be out of, you know what I mean? You guys know what I mean. We love it here and we'd love to stay, but you know, we're not going to move into a townhouse. And while I do appreciate that documents are living, breathing, humans are living and breathing too. And we need help, you know, with understanding what is going on here as well. So thank you.
Anna McMaster's, I live on 200 West. And my basic question is, what are your plans for 200 West? We've been told something, it changed, something again, it changed. This is like a dog and pony show for me. I don't, I need to know at least a timeline so that I know what's in my future. I'm widowed. I have to do this by myself and it's not what I want in my purview. It's not what I want to do. I also need to know, we've just been annexed into the city, which is fine. Part of that comes with added some expenses, I understand. When you're talking about sewer and water and the people of the town, and I'm not even talking about me because I have a well and a septic right now, when you have to increase the size of those, the capacity of those, that's money, big money. Who's going to pay for that? Are you going to expect the citizens that already live here to pay for that when this new construction is bringing in money from what they're doing? Doesn't seem like that should land on the current residents. Seems like that should land on the people increasing and making more money. I've been through this before. I understand that. I also need to know, do you have capacity for all of that? Has anybody looked into what you're going to have to do to increase the capacity of just your sewer and your water? That's a big deal. So my biggest question, what's your plan for 200 West? I'd like to know.
Any other comments from the public? Close the public comment section. Ben, would you like to talk about a few of those points? Or maybe Kevin?
Scott may have some, some information too, but just to kind of talk about some of those things generally. As many of you on the planning commission know, there have been studies related to infrastructure, water, sewer, electric that have been ongoing for a number of months. Kevin is on a weekly phone call regarding transportation in this area. So there's, there is a massive traffic study that's going on related to the build out of the LEAP district that would address all those transportation questions and discussions. Water and sewer, I think we've been talking about in every one of these meetings we have here at the planning commission about how we're going to solve the water and sanitary sewer needs of this area, both by expanding our existing facilities in Lebanon, but then also adding additional new facilities as the area builds out. So there have been ongoing discussions for months related to those things and plans, and at least conceptually plans that are starting to come together related to those items. And there are constant updates that are, that are being provided, both the city and county representatives related to those things. So those are all things that are ongoing. In terms of which properties are included, which properties are not, as I mentioned at one point, only properties that have been, that have already been annexed into the city of Lebanon are part of the PUD ordinance, the extent of the PUD ordinance. So if there's property within this area that has not yet been annexed, that is not subject to the, to the regulations that would be assigned to the PUD ordinance. So we do anticipate over time that as additional properties are annexed, they will be assigned to the PUD ordinance designation as they're annexed. But until, until those properties annexed to the city of Lebanon, we have no jurisdiction to assign zoning to them. So as properties are annexed, we will add them to the PUD ordinance, the LEAP PUD zoning designation. And I think that covers, in terms of the cost improvements we're talking about, certainly the development will pay for itself. I know some of our initial improvements we're talking about, Eli Lilly has already made availability fee payments to Lebanon utilities and those are going to assist with some of the expansions that are taking place that are citywide. But certainly the development itself and the development being proposed is going to be the primary funder of any expansions that are going to be necessary for this area, not the existing ratepayers of the city of Lebanon. So those are, those are all plans that are underway as well now too. So there's a lot of things that are happening right now and more information will be rolled out as we're able to. But the PUD ordinance is going to address a lot of these questions regarding transportation, things like that, because it's going to address how that's going to take place. But Kevin, if there's anything you can add, as I said, you're on weekly calls regarding transportation in this area. I know there's multiple traffic studies that are taking place to address some of the questions about how traffic and transportation will be addressed.
Yeah, yeah, there are weekly calls about Lilly traffic, about LEAP district traffic, about indot and federal highway traffic. So there's, there's a lot of traffic studying going on, a lot of consultants across the state that are helping out. You know, there's, yeah, so several people ask, are there being studies done? Yes, there are a number of studies being done just on traffic alone. And there's equally similar amounts of studying happening for water and sewer and electric and everything else that's going on, Ben mentioned. I guess the one thing I'd really add, I think Ben summed it up well, is that, you know, there's, there's always this sort of position like, we'll build it first. And, and the problem with building it first, the other comment we heard was, are the residents going to have to pay for it? Well, if we build it first, the only way for the city to pay for it is by the residents paying for it, by raising taxes. And, you know, we've done a good job at the city of actually balancing budget year after year through this administration, reducing the tax rate. I know our taxes increase, but your tax rate is decreasing because we're being fiscally responsible. But that's the, that's the diametrically opposed position you can be in there, right? We can't build it first without paying for it. And projects aren't going to build it without knowing that there's a project. So yes, we have to struggle through letting Lilly and the IEDC build it while they're building development projects because there's really no other way for us to do it unless we were to burden the citizens with those, those costs. And they're, they would be astronomical. One mantra you would hear if you hang around City Hall is LEAP pays for LEAP. You know, so the road improvements, the sewer improvements, the water improvements, the electric system upgrades, those aren't going to be burdened by ratepayers, those aren't going to be burdened by taxes. Those infrastructure projects are all coming with the district. We're just getting started, so I know that, that may not mean a whole lot to everybody in the room, but I can tell you the $15 million worth of road projects that's, that the LEAP and Lilly are trying to get permitted right now, the city, the county are not paying a dime for any of those things. And we're committed to continuing to, to be fiscally responsible as things go forward and studying all aspects of the infrastructure as it goes along. So there's a lot to it, but I just, I guess I'd like people to think about that, that the build it and they will come idea only works if you have an extreme amount of funding on hand to make that happen.
One thing is, as you come up there, just to point out, go ahead, you're, come on up, you're good. One thing that I kind of take exception to is when we're saying that ratepayers aren't going to pay it because the reality is, our businesses in the business park are ratepayers. Eli Lilly is a ratepayer, right? They're going to be ratepayers. So to say ratepayers aren't going to pay it, I think is a little disingenuous. One of my other hats that I wear, I sit on the redevelopment commission. We signed a memorandum two weeks ago to pay $3 million from TIF funds, so from the business park for wastewater improvements directly for the business park, right? So residential users are not paying for improvements that will help the business park, but ratepayers, our business park tenants are paying those fees, right? So it's, that's one of those caveats that it sounds great to say ratepayers aren't going to pay it. Ratepayers are paying it. It's just the commercial ratepayers, not the residential ratepayers.
It's a good point. Those commercial ratepayers today pay over 50% of the tax burden for the city. A lot of people don't realize that very often, but our business park as it sits today already pays half the tax burden. It's how we're able to keep tax rates low.
One other thing before Scott, I forgot to mention this, is if anyone on a daily basis has concerns or questions about what's taking place, I'll be happy to go grab a stack of business cards and put them on the table out here. I've got a couple of folks that live out in this area that email me on a regular basis and I respond on a regular basis. So if you've got some concern or question or something you're just not sure about, I'd be happy to respond to emails or phone calls. Email is probably the best because I can keep track of those a little bit better. But there's a lot happening, so if you've got something you're curious about or not sure what's going on, please send me an email. If I can't answer it, I'll get it to the IEDC's hands so they can, they can provide some, some commentary as well. But there's a lot happening and there's a lot we're aware of that it's really hard for us on a daily basis to broadcast out there. But if anybody has any comments or questions or concerns, just curiosities, please email me. I'd be happy to respond to those. So I'll grab some business cards when the meeting's done and anybody can grab one of those on the way out. Scott?
Thanks, Ben. Just a couple of things again to supplement what has been said. First of all, IEDC uses a real estate brokerage firm called Cushman and Wakefield. And so if folks have questions about those issues, they're, they can contact me, but then if, if there's a broker other than Cushman and Wakefield that says that they're representing the IEDC, which sometimes happens, that's incorrect. they're representing the IEDC, which sometimes happens, that's incorrect. And we've said that before, and sometimes there are folks that, that say they represent somebody and they don't. But I, I will be available, and I can route those questions to the broker or answer many of them myself. Secondly, as Ben indicated, folks email him all the time. Ben emails me all the time. I respond within 24 hours. He did it today about somebody that had a question about purchasing, et cetera. So just wanted to let the folks know, we are in communication. Third, the questions about resources, I thought Kevin did a great job talking about the transportation, and Ben did as well. But, but there's another perspective. The, the questions about, what about water? What about wastewater? What about electricity? What about the natural resources? All great questions from the community. We get those questions every day as well, from the folks that want to invest billions of dollars in this area. People are not going to invest 3, 4, 10, 15 billion dollars unless we have a plan to answer those questions. They will not write those kind of checks for nine figures unless we demonstrate that we have the water resources. Unless we demonstrate that we have the sewer and wastewater resources and a plan to do it. Unless we demonstrate that they have the electricity available to them. Unless we demonstrate that we have roads, because they don't want any more congestion than we all do. So it, so please understand that, that there are weekly meetings on these issues and have been for a long time. We can probably do a better job saying, yeah, we're looking at all of these things. Because IEDC through its, its, its planning folks and its contractors are looking at these. So great questions, just wanted to be clear about the answer is, is that we have no choice but to do all of this. Because if we don't, nobody's going to invest billions of dollars in, in a, in a park that doesn't have water or, or sufficient water. Any other questions? I think that answered a couple of the questions. Nope?
Any other questions?
Anything else from Plan Commission members?
Today?
Maybe just to cap it off, and again, as I mentioned, this was just here for an introduction tonight. So schedule moving forward, June 29th from 4:30 to 7:30 PM in this room that's just right here behind the council chambers. We'll be holding the open house, and there'll be a lot more details on the conference and plan amendment and the PUD ordinance. We'll also probably around that same time be posting drafts of those documents on our website, and also making them available to anybody who requests them. Then we'll be accepting all feedback and comments throughout, just on an ongoing basis throughout this time period, and, and we'll make sure to incorporate as many of those things as we can into those documents. The intent would be then to come back to this body in July, the, on the July 17th regularly scheduled meeting, and present all that information to you and request a recommendation from you to forward that to the council. So that'd be what's, what's happening over the next five to six weeks or so. Again, we'll, we'll make the information available as quickly as we can, once it is available, and then we'll accept comments any time. Again, as I said, I'll grab some cards on, so for any from the public that has some questions, we'll make sure to distribute it as quickly as possible. When that draft comes out, we'll make sure to send that out to Plan Commission members as well. So you have that, and you can start digesting that even before we send packets out for July's meeting. So those are the next kind of big, big dates, and we'll be moving forward. And again, instead of, Plan Commission members have any questions or comments, please send them my way, and certainly anyone from the public, please send them my way as well. We'll make sure that those get addressed to the entire design team. So thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Scott. Our, if there's not any more business tonight, our next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, July 17th, 7:00 PM, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.